Oh, it's so.
Nothing there's anything. Oh, really?
Oh.
You know. So let me.
Oh.
Like maybe. I um. I had three thousand.
Yeah, having started.
That's.
What happened?
Yeah, in the. Doesn't. Simply.
Oh.
Yeah.
Jack. I was.
Always.
A long time. She. Oh, oh, yeah. Sure.
A long time. I worry. Do I have? Still don't stay down like we are. That had a main. Kind of. No, it's almost.
Yeah.
Yeah. Really. You know.
That's.
I'm. I watch it out. You want to turn it off. So I do.
Anyway.
All for that.
And then we put it on your home. Well, switch it on.
I think on the. Why? I got your. They have.
So I feel like.
Are you?
Please.
Oh, yeah, that probably. I. Yeah. We won't. Have to watch. Now. I know. So. Yeah. So. Well, I guess. Well, that. Okay. You stand. Right. So yeah. She don't have to. Right. But.
And you're up there. We had this. I hit sweet feedback.
My question.
Already? We're being.
Don't.
Yes.
I tell.
I'll be. I'm. But I hope sometime. I'm not. I'm so. I can't. Actually. Yeah. We made this. Here's. But the power.
I don't support you. Yes. I haven't. Look at. We can't. You know. To. I mean. True.
See. That's always. That one. Yeah. The question is. You know. Yeah. You know.
Oh, okay. Down. For now.
In a world of. You know. Something.
And.
Maybe. I'll. Very. Yes. For what?
No. That's.
Yeah.
Right. The after.
Yeah. I'm.
The after.
Yeah. Yeah. I was. I was. So. Yeah. I'm. I'm. They're all. If you're. Then. Yeah. They. Took. They. Oh.
That's. We. Yeah. We. That is. Your neighbor. Like. He. Well. I wanted. He was. He. Both. You. I would. I would. I would. I didn't. For. One. And. I. Yeah.
Like. That.
I'm. Okay. I. I. Oh. Yeah. Trying to get. You. That's. Exactly.
It had something like a. Yeah. People. Times. Yeah. Oh.
Not. Good. I think. It's. Totally. Now. They don't.
Yeah. They're. Yeah.
And. I. I. Just. Yeah. I think. That's. That's. I think.
There's. People.
Very.
Oh. I. You're very. Oh.
I can't. See. That'll. Keep. All. They. Like. This.
Uh. I.
It is. My. Friend. They. It's. Like. Help. Her. And. I think. I like. You. Like. It's. Like. I come. I don't. Do. Or. I'm. Going. Let's. See. Thank you. And. That's. All right. Right. I got. From. Me. No. Like. What? I. That's.
There.
You're. Like. Everybody. Know. Why? My. I. I just. I don't. On. They. We. I.
Church. Colors. There. Come. In. Tree. Doing a home church. Well, that'd be. A little. Way. And. We're. Especially. There. Was. Well. Yeah. Is. Because.
You know. I.
V. Next. V. B.
I mean.
Or.
Yeah. Sure. Way. Yeah. He said. All. Yeah. Uh huh. I know.
We have a lot of friends. That I've come back. It's. Good. Church. And. Box. Um. So. You should. They're all. You. So.
We. Have. To. Make. It. Say. Oh. Yeah.
I. Yeah. I. So. I. I. Took. That. One.
We. We. For. You. We. Time. You. Do. That. And. It's. Sure. But. You have.
So I get it. That's. Generally. Fans. It's just. Holy. Yeah. I'm. Yeah. It's good. To. Be. Yeah. Like Saturday. Virgins. I mean, there's. They had a lot of. Work. They. They don't. Wait. For. Down. The. Year. And. That's. Probably. You know. I. It's. Sometimes. I'm not. They're. Won't. You. Have. Things. That. Oh, but. Yeah. I have. And. We have. Cars. We don't. Play. There. Like. Yeah. But that. Didn't. Hurt. It. Yeah. It. It. Should. Be. And next. The old woman. And. If. You know. That. Well. I know. They're. Oh. They're gonna have. The kids. You know. And. They. Eat. That. Same. And. When. I'm. So. What? They. They. I mean. See. When. Throw. Bang. They're gonna have. About. You. They. So. They want. Also. And you're. Still. Going. To. See. Into. You. As. You know. Yeah. So. We. Don't. You. These. Are. Since. You. Actually. But. Yeah. I don't know. How. They. Even. They. Get. The. Question. That. So.
My.
For. Yeah. Thank you. For. Shining. Yeah. But like. He said. He required. Fresh. Being. Financially. He's. He. That. It's. Really. You know. He. Right. He. Just. He. Got. That. Share. Probably.
We all. Ever. Had. That. English. To. Him. Those.
I want. The church. On. The. Everything. Is. In. One. There. Just. Even. Those. We. I. Here. I. Have. We. Yeah. I'm. We. Yeah. That's. History. Yeah. It'll be interesting. Hopefully. That. Be. Like. A. Hope. You. Have. It's. About. That. I'll. Two. But. It's like. Two. If. You. Are. Just. They. Kind. Of. It. Just. It's. I mean. Second. To. The. Church. Right. I don't. Want. To. Try. That. Same. That. It's. Ship. Is. Something. You. Don't. Try. A. Good. Or. Were. How many? Is. Our. Worries? Uh. Our. President. This. First. Will. Have. Been. So. I. See. Because. It's. Not. World. If. The. All. Just. So. Take. Like. I. Take. All. Actually. Think. Anybody. In. The. Fourth. I. See. Can. Well. He. Could. Stay. On. That. I. Think. They. We. Go. To. All. I'm. We. Really. Nice. Night. I. But. You. Remember. That. Almost. Super. Add. It. Is. You. But. Man. You. But. I. Do. You. Have. You.
The. Meeting. Never. Started. Three. Years. Oh. Since. Everybody's. Here. Yeah.
Twenty. Years. Unfortunately. Yeah. It's almost. You. Said. It's. Wow. So. I. Got. Okay. Thanks.
Yeah.
We. All. Just. Seven. Three. Years. I went. And. Screwed. You know. But. We. Haven't. Been. That. Now. We're. So. What? Looking. At. Three. Years. And. Start. Uh. I. Well. I was. Asked. If. He. Like. Very. Good. I. Was. Going. To. Get. Out. When. Three. Days. Or. Something. That. We. Heard. It.
That's.
Uh. It's. On. Screen.
Here.
Uh. Who. Is. The. Time. On. She. From. There. That. We. Right. Yeah. The. Year. Was. All. Right. The. Same. That. We're. Having. Things. That.
Especially. I. Did. If. You're. Working. On. So.
Uh. The. Man. For. Pride. She. Didn't. Do. That. We. Have. Four. Thank. You. Really. Um. You can't. Trust.
What? Okay.
You. Well. There. Go.
Welcome to the sun.
Madam Clerk, are you ready?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Good morning, it is nine twenty-three on February sixth, twenty twenty-four, and I call this meeting of the Bonner County Commissioners to order. For the record, I am Chairman Luke Ommitt and Commissioners Asia Williams and Steve Bradshaw are also present. Please rise for the invocation with Pastor Janine Shepherd.
Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we are grateful in freedom that we can come to you and pray to you. We know that your ways are best and we submit to you as the author and perfecter of our lives. We are thankful that you bend down and listen to us, waiting for us to come to you. You're a good father. We lift up each item on the agenda today, asking that you give the Commissioners wisdom to address each item, hearing from you and what is best for our county. Give them willingness to submit their will to yours and to have your plan as foremost in their minds. Lord, you call us to love our neighbor as we love ourselves. Help us to work in unity with you and with the people around us. Help us to seek unity rather than division, showing your glory in our actions and attitudes. Our life goal is to build your kingdom, not our own. And in every moment of our lives, we pour our lives out for you, for your glory. Where we need to forgive, give us the power to forgive others. Where we have hurt others, we pray that you give us the strength to ask for forgiveness. We know this is beyond ourselves, but we know it is your will that we do not hold offenses against our brothers and sisters, and that you will give us the power to do this, to do your will in this. We thank you, Father, for all you're doing as in this county of ours. We are grateful for such a beautiful place. Let the way of this place be love rooted in you. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, into this world with liberty and justice for all.
Have a point of order.
Go ahead.
So Standing Rules Action Item Discussion Decision regarding that, that has already come towards the board. And there was a prior decision made two to one to state that once something comes on for discussion and it is actually voted on, it cannot return to the agenda. So I am asking that that be removed from the agenda when we go towards adopting the Order of Agenda, because we already addressed standing rules.
You are overruled by the Chair, and we will proceed with the order and the regular business of Bonner County.
I would like you to explain why your item gets to come back, yet my items don't get to come back, because you're not explaining that, and that was something that was passed by this board.
Commissioner Williams, you are overruled, and we will now proceed. There is no standing rule, it is a standing item on there. But we are going to adopt the Order of the Agenda, and I will step down from the Chair and move to amend the agenda to allow for the immediate trespass of Dave Bowman. Is there a second?
There is.
There is a motion and a second. Is there discussion on the amendment?
I would like you to explain what the reason for the trespass is. Bonner County does not have a trespass rule. And the board making a decision to trespass someone, it demands that you provide some type of very clear evidence, because what you're doing is passing the risk of trespassing someone unlawfully onto Bonner County residents. And so I would also ask that as Bill Wilson is online, currently what it appears is that Sandpoint PD is staying and waiting for a decision of the board to trespass somebody. We don't have any guidelines on how to do that to ensure no violation. The risk, the risk associated with trespassing someone is basically because we don't like what they have to say, and that is a very dangerous road for Bonner County to go down. We don't control what we don't like to hear by trespassing people and then pushing that cost on, because I promise you, we are facing lawsuits if you do that. So since Bill Wilson is online.
Commissioner Williams, we are not.
Actually.
We're in discussion, there's been a motion and a second, and we are supposed to be discussing this, and so you've made your point now.
No.
For the other board members.
That's not how it works. I can ask Bill Wilson, it's in, if you look at the ordinance that you want to change, I am allowed as a Commissioner to reach out to anybody that's actually in the audience, which is inclusive of Bill Wilson, it's actually inclusive of the person you're trying to trespass. The community should demand this answer, because this is going to be the foundation of a lawsuit. Bill Wilson, have you reviewed Commissioner Ommitt's desire to trespass?
So.
I'm asking a question, so I start, I'd like to finish.
The way that this works, Commissioner, I understand that there are some challenges, but conversation and the Chairman presides. I am presiding at this meeting. There is a motion to amend the Order of Agenda to trespass Dave Bowman. And state law is very clear. Bonner County is a political subdivision of the state of Idaho. Trespass is a criminal offense. The safety of our employees, as I stated last week here, is an absolute priority. The safety of every member of the public who attends, and even us, is an absolute priority for this Commissioner. So we are going to return to the motion and the second to amend to allow for the trespass. Do you have anything to add, Commissioner?
No, you're not bypassing me. I was kind and I didn't interrupt you when you're speaking, but as a member of the board, I can reach out to people in the audience that are present. I ask for Bill Wilson to give an opinion on what you're trying to do, as it is a significant risk to Bonner County. And the people that are watching this should pay attention, because when the suit comes and we have to pay, we have no explanation for why we're doing this as the board. And so when Commissioner Ommitt steps down from the board and civilly arrests Dave Bowman, that's his lawsuit. But when this board makes a decision to trespass someone without a policy, without a legal recommendation, it's all of your money that's going to do this suit, and we will lose. Because right now, the opinions you have is, Sandpoint PD said they will not come in and address any trespassing issues, because we don't have a trespass policy. They literally wrote that in the letter. I don't know why Sandpoint PD is standing out, because we still don't have a trespass policy, and I requested that yesterday, and it was confirmed that the answer is no. So they don't need to waste your tax dollars waiting to arrest, because someone doesn't like someone else. It's a ridiculous misuse of power. And it's a ridiculous misuse of county funds just to trespass someone to say you don't like them. Sandpoint PD shouldn't be standing here. There are people out in our county that need their help, and it isn't this board. We need a legal opinion. Bill Wilson was required to be present for our meetings. It is reasonable to ask him of the risk associated with a decision that is not based on evidence at all. Bill Wilson, I put back to you my question as, have you reviewed Commissioner Bradshaw and Ommitt's desire to trespass Dave Bowman from this meeting?
Mr. Wilson.
Because in the current meeting per the statute, Dave Bowman has done nothing but sit down, so you don't have a behavior to point to to justify what you're doing. Sitting peacefully is not a reason to trespass, and if you do it in this meeting, this video with all of this stuff coming out of my mouth is not going to help us. So I'm asking you not to do it. Address it with legal appropriately, because we will be sued. And you've been told that, and Sandpoint PD should not be put in the middle of a board that doesn't like. And so since Bill Wilson hasn't responded to me, I am going to ask Dave Bowman to answer some questions about.
Absolutely not. Absolutely. Yes, as a matter of fact.
Idaho too, our ordinance says that I can ask questions of anybody in the public.
All will be recognized through the Chair. We are immediate roll call.
No, it doesn't say that.
Madam Clerk, Williams.
My request does not have to be recognized before the Chair when I'm speaking, was to begin the speech.
Commissioner Ommott?
And the speech.
Yes.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Yes. Would you give Commissioner Williams one more opportunity to vote, please?
Commissioner Williams?
I am telling you right now that the people in the audience should be fighting against this discussion.
The motion carries. We will, I will now step down from the Chair and move to adopt the Order of Agenda as amended. Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt the Order of Agenda as presented.
I would also.
I move to amend the Order of Agenda and to remove the standing rules as well as your.
Roll call vote.
It has not been passed. You guys can't first and second and say it's been passed.
Proceed with the vote.
Commissioner Williams? Commissioner Ommott?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Yes.
The order has been amended. I will now move to have Dave Bowman trespassed from Bonner County for a period of one year. Is there a second?
There is a second.
There is a motion and a second. Is there a, is there discussion?
There is discussion, which means we have to have a dialogue. What is the reason?
Okay, dialogue is Mr. Bowman's email.
So how is it that the Chair allows Bradshaw to interrupt? Can you give him a sticky stop? So my question is, what is it that you're using to trespass him for a year? And what rule within Bonner County Code or the state allows you to trespass him for a year? There's a, we have no policy, so what is the law that you're using? Because we need to know what we need to start defending ourselves with.
The safety of our employees.
So Bradshaw can leave with them? Is Bradshaw leaving with them? Because mine at least has been adjudicated by a court of law and two independent investigations.
Mr. Rose, you are not recognized by the Chair, so.
It's what, nine thirty-four, and we will take a recess? Or you can answer my question. What is the law that you're using to trespass him? This is our county's liability. Everybody watched us do a budget. How much money do we have? For those of you who talked about the Uzetta claim and the eight hundred thousand dollars that it paid and the five hundred thousand to attorney fees, do you think we can afford a case of illegally criminally trespassing someone with a board that refuses to tell you the rule? This is silencing the public, because you don't like what they want to say. And it doesn't matter what your political leaning is. Nobody should sit down and let this happen, because we will pay for it royally.
Commissioner Williams.
So I would like the law. That is not dialoguing with you. I'd like the law that you're using.
Commissioner Williams. When some, when someone writes that they will take offensive action, that they will not retreat, that they are prepared, that if someone has a firearm in a Second Amendment state and demonstrates such irresponsible behavior in writing.
So I expect you to tell Commissioner Bradshaw that he needs.
Do I get?
You're not answering my question. I asked you for the law. It's not your time.
Madam Clerk, telling you, you won't listen.
Your time is for you to speak.
Roll call vote.
When I speak, I'm asking you a question instead of answering, you're giving comments, and that's not what deliberation is. I am reasonably asking for the rule. And then after we do that, then you move forward and say something.
Commissioner Ommott?
Yes.
We are literally performing for the jury on this.
The motion carries.
And I did not get asked to vote.
Yes, you did.
Mr. Bowman.
I did not.
I have been asked to leave this meeting.
I did not get asked to vote.
Nine thirty-six.
I did not get asked for the vote.
This meeting is recessed while I work with Sandpoint Police Department.
Can you hear me, Commissioners?
Yes, Alyssa.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams.
There's coffee in the corner.
In the corner.
And donuts.
Madam Clerk, are we ready?
Yes.
Okay. It is nine fifty-four and we are coming out of recess. And we have adopted our order of the agenda. However, before doing so, Bonner County did engage in a new process for online testimony. And I want to give everybody that's out there because there is a number of people that opportunity to be able to sign up. And there is a online public comment form. So if anybody that has not yet signed up today, I would like to provide that opportunity for them to do so.
Point of order.
There hasn't been a motion.
I don't need a motion for point of order. Point of order, Louis Marshall indicated, we can't require people to have to give you the topic that they want to discuss in their email address on a form that the, there is nothing that requires that of the public. Additionally, your form for people to fill out wasn't there in time for people to know before the hour that you're restricting. And we didn't vote that you were going to impose that type of a rule, nor pass the form that you're using. And so I don't think it's appropriate to require. And I think this meeting is a great example of people that sat in this room and said they didn't have anything to say. They just wanted to come and watch. Probably have some questions for us after what just happened. And what you're doing is you're removing the freedom of speech in Bonner County in a different way right now. And so I am urging the board to stop doing that because we are not headed in a right direction with respect to public comment. If you listen to Commissioner Chat, he was very clear. You should be willing to hear the opinions that you don't want to hear. Just sit and listen. But if you choose to demand that of the public, there's no re, there's no obligation for them to comply.
Commissioner Williams, is there a point of order? Are you just looking to fill out what is happening?
So again, you're in, you're not in your own code of conduct, which you wrote at the end of those. You don't talk to people like that per your code. What I said was, we didn't vote on what you're trying to institute, and therefore I don't think it's reasonable. And what you're not doing is having a discussion about imposing something that's not reasonable, but using it to violate the right of the people.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I believe that you should have a.
On to your response. We are not, there is no motion on the floor. There is no second. There is no discussion, but I will, I, I am going to give an answer. And as the chair, as the chair presides, to begin with, I'm going to read from the Idaho Legislature.
I'm going to interrupt you because you're not answering me and I'm, it's not reasonable.
In a point of order.
No, just what I called for, because I would like you, and again, I will tell you.
The next, uh, the next agendized item is going to be the consent agenda, but I have here and I will put into the record.
Point of order, that's your district report. It's not for us to have to listen to your legislative report. That's not what's on the agenda. If you're not going to let me speak, then you go write down this agenda and I'll comment as needed.
The chairman presides at the meeting. So Madam Clerk, I will have these entered into the record. What these are are the rules of the Idaho Legislature that talks about remote testimony. Yet again, Bonner County is a political subdivision of the state of Idaho. And this is what you have to do in order to testify. I will enter these into the record so that the public can see where ours came from.
This is just public comment, so it's not applicable. And you're going off of the agenda while stifling communication from a sitting, sitting representative, which is the same as not allowing people the right to speak.
Overruled and the next agenda, I understand that Commissioner.
To be overruled. I'm telling you that you're not answering what I'm asking, and it is detrimental to Bonner County to take away the right of the people to speak. And we were just told that again by Louis Marshall today, and you're ignoring the rules. People don't have to do what you said. Signing up is reasonable. Raising your hand is reasonable. Today is an example of why I understand why you don't want these people to raise their hand and speak. But that's not what you should do.
Commissioner Williams, our agendized item, and I would entertain a motion.
Chairman, based on the information before, if I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I second the motion.
The motion is, there is a motion and a second, and for the consent agenda, there is one confidential item, which is a, it's for the sheriff, but it's confidential, so I'm not going to tell anybody about it. There is a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion in regards to the motion on the floor?
None.
Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Omart?
Yes.
Mr. Bradshaw?
Yes, ma'am.
The motion carries. Our next agenda is item is worth Kirk Rosedale.
It's a little one. What the heck?
Yeah. Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, everybody. Before you, I have fiscal year twenty-four claims batch number nine in the amount of two hundred eighty-nine thousand six hundred three dollars and three cents and demand batch number nine in the amount of fifteen thousand, three hundred ten dollars and thirty-eight cents. Totalling three hundred forty-seven thousand, nine hundred thirteen dollars and forty-one cents for your approval and the demands batch Patterson. It's pretty, it's very small. We have eighteen thousand dollars for, uh, the law enforcement software and ten thousand for fuel charges and the rest of it.
All right, I'll move to approve payment of the FY twenty-four claims and demands and batch number nine totaling three hundred forty-seven thousand, nine hundred thirteen dollars and forty-one cents.
I'm going to amend and pull out items on page eleven four two two five for further review. I haven't received responses to those um, that I need to clarify what those bills are for.
Who did you submit those to?
I said I needed to get clarification on those. I got this this morning.
So I will step down from the chair and second the motion that was put on the floor to approve them. Now, Commissioner Williams, would you like to amend? To see, to amend that motion?
I amend the motion to remove items under four two two five so that I can get clarification on what those services are for.
Is there a second to the amendment? The amendment dies. No, there is not. There is a motion and a second on the floor. Roll call vote.
Mr. Williams?
No.
Mr. Omart?
Yes.
Mr. Bradshaw?
Yes. The motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners. Next I have fiscal year twenty-four EMS batch number nine in the amount of nineteen thousand, nine hundred fifty-six dollars and eighty-four cents for your approval.
I move to approve payment of the FY twenty-four EMS claims and batch nine totaling nineteen thousand, nine hundred fifty-six dollars and eighty-four cents.
Seconded.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any discussion amongst the Board of Commissioners? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Omart?
Yes.
Mr. Bradshaw?
Yes, ma'am.
The motion carries. Thank you, Kirk Rosedale. Our next agenda is item will be with road and bridge, Mr. Mulder.
Good morning, Commissioners. Matt Mulder, Staff Engineer for the Road and Bridge Department. Road and Bridge has budgeted for crushed rock and gravel and sand, and we are seeking the board's approval to advertise for crushing bids. This is an annual thing that we do for getting materials for maintaining gravel roads and for our chip rocks for doing our chip seals on the asphalt roads and for traction sand. And we put out three bids every year, one for each of the three road districts, and need your approval to advertise.
All right, I move to approve the notice of advertisements for rock crushing in districts one, two, and three.
I second the motion.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any discussion amongst the Board of Commissioners? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Omart?
Yes.
Mr. Bradshaw?
Yes, ma'am.
The motion carries. Mr. Mulder.
All right. Item number two, in March of twenty twenty-two, Governor Little signed Senate Bill one three five nine, which goes by the title of Leading Idaho Local Bridges Program. It allotted two hundred million dollars um, to the replacement of local bridges, which were rated in poor condition throughout the state of Idaho. Uh, within the state, there are four hundred roughly bridges that are rated in poor condition. And so through this money and this program, we were able to submit grant applications um, for up to half of our bridges that are rated in poor condition. So we were able to submit applications for five bridges to this program. And all five of those bridges have been selected for funding for replacement. So we've done well there.
How long have you worked for Bonner County Road and Bridge, Mr. Mulder?
Twelve years now.
How many bridges have we replaced in that time?
Two.
And right now we have approximately seven that are in the queue.
Correct. Five under this program and two through the federal aid bridge replacement grant program.
That is fantastic. That is, that is unbelievable.
Thank you.
There's three of them being replaced on Colburn. But in regards, the other piece that I'd like to bring to the people's attention is the quality before we get through a motion and a second. On, I believe it was Sunday afternoon, there was a washout on the Hundred Block of Peninsula Road of.
I have a point of order on this.
Overruled. I'm going to finish, I know that I'm actually going to make my statement because we don't even have a motion and a second on the floor.
But I'm asking for, fine, called question because we're not giving updates. You don't allow me to give updates. That's something that you should find a different venue for. That's what you can't, this looks like you impose rules for one person and not the others. If I, you need to allow, follow the agenda. It's not the agenda to give an update. Otherwise, my district report should go during the business and not public comment.
Thank you for that. What I'm actually doing is I'm giving a commendation to the Road and Bridge Department for keeping our roads cleared so that the people of Bonner County can drive safely. So you're darn right that I am going to commend our Road and Bridge Department for clearing the road, showing up in the middle of a night on a Sunday and working to make so that people can travel in Bonner County safely. And I'm going to say good work, and I'm going to say thank you very much for that.
Which is very specific to what I actually do a district report, which you deny. Because I make sure to give commendations to everybody that I interface with, which is a lot of road and bridge. So if it's good for you, I look forward to you letting me do my district report.
Okay, I move the Board of Commissioners to approve LTAC and local agreement, leading Idaho Bridge Program, Bridge Number KN two zero six four five, KN three zero two two five, and KN three zero two three five to replace the Rapid Lightning Bridge Number Four, Colburn Culver at Grouse Creek Bridge, and Colburn Culver at Pack River North Bridge.
I second the motion.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any discussion amongst the board?
Fine job. Thank you.
Hearing none, roll call vote.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Omart?
Yes.
Mr. Bradshaw?
Yes, ma'am.
The motion carries. Our next agenda is item is with Ms. Clark with Human Resources.
Good morning. Uh, Alicia Clark, HR Director for the Record. Uh, Bonner County HR Office is seeking approval to destroy records um, as outlined in Exhibit A in compliance with Idaho Code thirty-one dash eight seven one. Uh, our retention for termination files is ten years. So we would like to destroy twenty eleven, twelve, and thirteen.
And it was approved by legal?
Yes.
Based on the information before us, I make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-four sixteen for the approval of destruction of human resource records.
Would second that.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any discussion amongst the Board of Commissioners? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Omart?
Yes.
Mr. Bradshaw?
Yes.
The motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Clark. Our next agendized item is with Mr. Chase Youngdahl of Noxious Weeds.
Good morning. Uh, for the record, I'm Chase Youngdahl with Bonner County Noxious Weeds. Uh, Commissioners, the first item before you is the Selkirk Cooperative Weed Management Areas two thousand twenty-four Annual Operating Plan and application to be submitted to the Idaho State Department of Agriculture for Noxious Weed Cost Share Funding that's appropriated by the Idaho Legislature. The first project um, in that annual operating plan is for the local early detection rapid response noxious weed projects. These are noxious weeds that occur on a limited basis throughout Bonner and Boundary Counties. Uh, the second project is the Neighborhood Cooperative Landowner Herbicide Reimbursement Program. And the third project is public education for the procurement of CWMA branded promotional items. There's no cash match required for this cost share program. The match is achieved through equipment and labor. Uh, this is an inherently ongoing program that the CWMA is applied to the state for, for, for this cost share funding. Typically, this would come before you in December, as this is usually due at the end of the year. Uh, but the Quagga Muscle Response this last fall on the Snake River um, created service related delays within the Noxious Weed and Basis B C Division and the Department of Ag that pushed this out a couple of months. So it's before you now, a little bit later than usual. With that, I will turn it over to the board.
Based on the information before us, I move to approve the two thousand twenty-four Selkirk Cooperative Weed Management Areas Annual Operating Plan and associated cost share application for request from the Idaho State Department of Ag in the amount of fourteen thousand, three hundred sixty-four dollars with approximately seven thousand dollars to benefit Bonner County.
You second that?
There is a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion amongst the Board of Commissioners? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Omart?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Bradshaw?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Uh, the next item before you dovetails into the first item. It's the Selkirk Cooperative Weed Management Areas um, end of year report from two thousand twenty-three. Just summarizing and compiling the accomplishments from, from the CWMA's work from the last season. And this is to be submitted in conjunction with the annual operating plan and cost share application for the next year. And with that, I'll turn this one over to the board.
All right, Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to approve twenty twenty-three Selkirk Selkirk Cooperative Weed Management Area End of Year Report for submission to the Idaho State Department of Agriculture.
I second the motion.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion amongst the Board of Commissioners? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Omart?
Yes.
Mr. Bradshaw?
Yes, ma'am.
The motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Our next agendized item is with Planning and Mr. Tyson Lewis.
Morning Commissioners, morning members of the public. Tyson Lewis, Bonner County Planning for the record. Uh, we have an applicant requesting a time extension on a preliminary, preliminary plat approval, and this is per Bonner County Revised twelve dash six five one G. The preliminary short plat shall be valid for a period not to exceed two calendar years from the date of approval. At any time prior to the expiration date of a preliminary short plat, an applicant may make a written request to Planning Director for an extension of the preliminary short plat for a period up to two years. Finding that the conditions or applicable regulations have not changed so substantially as to warrant reconsideration of the proposed subdivision with respect to public health, safety, and general welfare. Planning Director may recommend such request for an extension at any regular business meeting of the Board of Commissioners. The extension request must be approved or denied prior to the expiration of the preliminary short plat. So this is a Garfield Bay. So this is a Garfield Bay short plat. Preliminary plat was approved in May of twenty twenty-one. It's set to expire May of twenty twenty. Four, sorry.
Twenty-two.
Sorry. So yeah, they're just asking for an extension on it. Nothing's changed dramatically. They're asking for some extra time to complete their improvement plans.
Have they started their improvement plan?
Yeah. Yep, and they've got Will Serves from Garfield Day Water and Sewer and.
On the hill with the rocks.
I can't tell you where it's at.
Yeah.
No, it's, it's, it's right here on there. I'll send that for you.
All right, thanks. Move to approve a time extension of Cozy Cottage One File SS zero 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 five dash two, one. Date March eighteenth, twenty twenty-six.
Second to motion.
There is a motion in a second. Is there any discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Omat?
Yes.
Mr. Bradshaw?
Yes, ma'am.
The motion carries. Thank you, Mister Lewis. Our next agendized item were placed on there by myself, and this is in regards to Bonner County Revised Code. For those members of the public, Bonner County Revised Code is one dash two hundred, and that's. The purpose of meetings. I have been working to. Seek some type of. Orderly process in our meetings. Since February of twenty twenty-three. And the manner in which that occurred was. Starting with requesting Dabollier Law. To provide training for the county, which was not voted for. We had an option from Mister Ford L. Sasser, who is a. Local attorney with a lot of experience. That was turned down, and the third option. Was having the Bonner County Republican Central Committee Parliamentarian Cornell Razor. Provide some training, and that too. Was never brought to fruition. And July of twenty twenty-three, the city of Sandpoint passed. An ordinance, which I believe is fourteen zero six. It was. Done based upon the work of their I-CRIM attorneys, which is the Idaho County Risk Management. Program. And it was brought forward to the city of Sandpoint. And eventually passed. In July, I submitted that ordinance. To our Bonner County Prosecutor. And I have included in the packet. Some of those, the email correspondence, I believe. To. To Bill, and. Then on January twelfth. I actually. Re, I formatted. That ordinance and submitted it, and it has decorum at public meeting policy. And it went like this. What do we need to do to update Bonner County Revised Code one dash two hundred? Should it be civil trespass? First, IAC. With six dash six oh two seems easier. I'm not crazy interested in pressing criminal charges. I want to maintain order. Lake City Law drafted this. The attorney has since retired, but their, their testimony. Is found online from July where they go through this process. So before the board, the first questions, I've got two hundred, two oh one, two oh two, two oh three. In chapter two. I feel that we need to update our Bonner County Revised Code. So. In the interest of time, so that we can get to public comment, I will. I think we just need to revise the whole chapter. I would step down from the chair. And move to update Bonner County Revised Code. Chapter two.
I second that.
There is a motion. And a second. Is there any discussion?
Absolutely, but at first, let's see if you'll accept this as a reason we can't move any farther. He didn't give me a memo to amend the ordinance. What I got were four copies of the same thing that says why we have to have an order. Therefore, this can't be actually voted on, if you recall. Well, I don't know what's in your hand. I know what's in my packet. What I got says. This chapter is enacted for the purpose of establishing a regular meeting schedule for the Bonner County Board of Commissioners. In order that the board activities can be carried out with greater public participation and awareness. What you're actually asking us to do is to amend that ordinance, and that is not what I received as a memo. And since, if you recall, a couple of weeks ago, it was now where I brought something forward. You refused to listen to it, saying that I had to put it on a memo. I did not receive it, so I would like you to agree to follow the rule that you imposed on me two weeks ago. And pull this off until you do it the way that you required me to do it.
Commissioner Williams, I'm a little bit confused. There's, I'm not proposing any language changes today. And there is a memorandum and.
Your proposal is to amend it, correct?
No, it is to move to update, but I'm, I'm not, I have no language. I'm not just adopting the new. Code, I'm not looking to up. What this will do is this will initiate a process. Where we will. Work with legal. We will have workshops. But all it is, is to see whether or not the board is interested versus just. Myself being interested. There is, I did attach the language so that the members of the public could see. And I will actually. Bill Wilson did give some.
But can I ask you to address what I asked before I go farther? What you wrote was not to start the process to amend the ordinance. What you wrote was a statement of why we have the meeting. And so we can't move forward if you impose the rule that you imposed on me to. Your memo to vote. Is not in line with what you're asking to be done. You're asking for us to start the process to amend an ordinance. That's what you would be motioning, but what you wrote is not in line with that, so you need to give a memo.
Commissioner Williams, what is written is actually taken directly from chapter two. This is taken from code, so. This chapter, this is from Bonner County Revised Code. So whether, regardless of your understanding. My understanding is that I cut and pasted. Revised Code. Right. Into this memorandum. And then I wrote a motion. Which is attached to a memorandum. To initiate a process. To update that code. I am not attaching language at this time because legal has given a written opinion.
Not to do it, but, but you're not hearing what I'm asking you, and you're mistaking. What you're, what you're wanting to vote on is for us to start the process to amend. You're not giving language of said amendment. But you want us to start the process to amend, which would be inclusive of workshops. That is not the memo that you gave to me. You gave me a memo that states why we have it, and so we already have the code in place. So your code, your request is to amend something. That is not the memo that you put forth times four. It was a memo that simply stated the purpose of that chapter. So your memo isn't in line with what you're going to potentially vote on. Because what your motion says is, based on the information before us, I move to update, but that is not what your memo is. You're wanting to change it.
I fully understand what the motion is.
But I'm.
Roll call vote.
Wait. Well, first I said before.
Commissioner Williams, you've had your.
No.
We were in discussion. There's a motion.
I want, I'm gonna push through this. What I asked you is if I could ask you a question about the memo, and if you agreed, then I didn't need to. What was written.
Yes.
And you said yes. Mr. Bradshaw?
Yes.
The motion carries. Our next.
Called her name. She was talking. She couldn't hear it.
I was listening.
Uh, our next agendized item today will be. Public comment.
I am going to throw a flag. You have four individual items, which means four separate votes. That's what you did.
Well.
If you recall, you made me split out my action discussion decision times three, twenty times to remove it. You are doing something different. You just literally voted on the whole thing when you put this down for the community on each individual item.
Commissioner Williams, I will address that. So there are one, two, three, four. Five, yes, there are five. That are all in chapter two inclusive. So we voted. To update chapter two, which if you update chapter two. I believe that it makes sense that you could update. The entirety of the chapter, and as previously mentioned.
As two weeks ago, when I said action item. It said action discussion decision exactly like this, and you removed my items. You put action discussion decision for purpose. The same for conduct, the same for regular, the same for special, the same for chapter two. That's what you wrote, which means you must vote on each and every one of those. That's what you did to me.
No. No. That is not what it means, and.
Mister Chairman, I move to amend the motion to update one, two hundred, one, two hundred and one. One, two hundred and two, one, two hundred and three, and chapter two in its entirety.
I'm not gonna second that. We've already voted. It's been amended. We're gonna go into the next agendized item. Which is our, our public comment. So. For the, and. Madam Clerk, while you're up, has anybody else signed up so that I can make sure that we. Get all of the people who did sign up on the form, besides the ones that were initially given to me?
Let me check one moment.
Thank you. I'm just gonna read this. The purpose for the public comment segment of the Board of County Commissioners Business Meeting. Is to enable citizens with issues or concerns which they wish to bring to the board's attention and afford an opportunity for consideration on a future agenda for possible board action. The board will not engage in dialogue with the presenter during this session, but rather may choose to schedule the presenter's topic for board consideration at a future business meeting. Questions may be directed to individual board members for the purpose of clarifying issues or to obtain additional information for the purpose of scheduling the matter for a future business meeting. However, no action will be taken on any issue or concern brought to the board's attention during this session. The chair will not entertain under any circumstances comments derogatory in nature toward any. Board member, staff member, elected official, or member of the public. Madam Clerk, was there any other signups?
No, there was not.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, just for, before we get into the public comment, it is ten twenty-three. We have a scheduled eleven o'clock executive session. I am going to work my way through all of the people who are here in the room first. And then we will work through the people who are online. By the way, if you sign up for public comment, just like the Idaho Legislature does. This is a public document, and the Board of County Commissioners will be happy to release this information to you so that you can see. Um, there is, and if you show up in person, you're gonna have the priority that you're gonna speak first, and then we'll go afterwards. So our first member of the public who is, who has asked to speak is Miss Amy Lunsford. Yes, ma'am. You have, state your name for the record, and also please state if you're a Bonner County resident, and you have three minutes to speak.
Amy Lunsford, for the record, I am a Bonner County resident. Okay, so, uh, months ago, when, um. I think his name was Spencer, and he was asking to up his allotted amount of money for his construction project to twenty thousand. Um, it seemed like a lot, and there was quite a bit of grumbling. In the room for it, but it seems somewhat reasonable because it is a big construction project and things need to come through. So, um. But now in retrospect, I pulled all the credit cards through a PRR, and we have people with credit cards with fifteen thousand dollars. So that seems like a lot to me that we have individuals in the county. Who have a credit limit of fifteen thousand dollars on a credit card, so they go anywhere from fifteen all the way down to two. Uh. We have budgets coming up. And I think all of us. With the current events that have happened in the past year are really wanting to know where our money is going. So will you be having a workshop on exactly how these credit cards are tracked? And how the money is allotted to them, because like, again, we have the sheriff. Who always has his, like, approvals for his five thousand dollars. So in these meetings, when they come up and say, uh, he has five thousand dollars for technology. And you guys say, oh, that's an approved, you know, go ahead and purchase it. Does that? Is that separate from the credit card purchases, or at this point are you saying it's okay for them to make the purchase on a credit card? Or do they get that amount of money that you allot to them in the meeting, and then they also have five thousand dollars? Worth a credit to spend on whatever they want, or fifteen thousand dollars. Um. Also. To add to that, and it gave me more confusion, when I watched the, uh. The, I think it was a workshop for the fair audit. Um. Treasurer. Costa had said that. They are given these allotments on their credit cards. But it's also the managing body, which I understood to be the electeds, that have to make sure that there is money in the budget. If they're going to be spending money on these credit cards. So it's, I guess I'm asking is, can you please do a workshop or something that explains to us, the public? How these credit cards are spread about the county? Who's spending on them? Who's monitoring? What's being spent on them? And how that impacts budget and the taxpayer?
Amy, are you asking for clarification on when you saw like on the agenda where it says? Request for five thousand dollar approval for technology?
Yes.
Are you thinking that that's also a credit card payment or asking for clarification? Because that's not a credit card payment. That's asking for it to come out of that line item on the budget.
Yes, that's why I'm asking is clarification. So they're allowed, so it's just weird to me that they're asking you guys if they can spend five grand. For technology when they already, and that, and the sheriff's. IT has a fifteen thousand dollar credit card, so why is he asking you if he can spend it? When he has a credit card for fifteen grand and he can just go buy it on his own?
And that has to do with budgets, because the budget, when they put it on this agenda, it's coming out of that line item. The credit card isn't for that type of spending, so you'll see, you go down to a convention and you pay with that credit card. And so there are limits that are different, and there's been some concern, why, why is it that people have a five thousand dollar limit? But the reimbursement request when that card, it comes with a requirement that you give the receipt. So like when I went to IAC. I had to bring the cost of the air hotel and the taxi ride. And I have to bring that receipt and then turn that in to be reimbursed. If I lose the receipts, there is the option for an affidavit, but I don't know how frequently that happens, but that's how the credit card payment is made.
Okay, so then that's even more questions on. Holy smokes, he has a fifteen thousand dollar credit card to spend on whatever he wants. That's a big vacation, in my opinion.
Thank you.
Okay, next one is. Jackie Quinan, is that right? Or? Heaven, pardon, I don't know if this is Q, U, I, E, N, E, S, or Owens. O W. E N, E S, L A K Y. Anybody fit that name?
Do you want me to read it for you?
Yeah. That one right there.
Yes, are you skipping me? Is that what it is? Ding ding ding, you found my gnome to Gary. Chat. Chat for guests. February thirteenth will be Army Corps of Engineers. Wetlands Regulatory and Permitting will be on. February twentieth, Region One Behavioral Health. More than one person requested this type of chat. I'm working on scheduling a provider that would like to participate with the Commissioner chat. I'll update the provider chat after this week. I understand people are frustrated that they're not hearing about. The chats via the business meeting. I'm working on that. I'm also trying to work on getting Idaho Public Utility Commission to participate with our. Um, meetings. Community engagement. Working with Stone Ridge regarding their water issues and concerns. Thank you to that community for doing a really good job organizing themselves and doing the research. Priest River Community Center Happy Ageders has done a significant amount of community involvement. They provide a large amount of services and aim to increase. Awareness of just how vital their services are. Some of the events that they're working on for seniors are senior financial planning, estate planning, health management, and they're.
The public comment over.
That's just a short list of what is being worked on for the community. As they continue to grow and have increased needs, they want to ensure that the county understands their value. So upcoming events, February seventeenth, we have the Blanchard Area Community Center. Caucus Education Session.
Pardon me, I'm gonna interrupt as the chair.
I'm giving a public comment.
I, you are not a member of the public. You are a member of the Board of County Commissioners, and we are going to. To the agendas. Thank you for that, so we are going to.
I, I've got to find out, you have been advised to stop taking my name off public comment because I'm not able to give a report, but if I can get my thing out in three minutes. I can give a public comment. You're just adding this to the list of civil rights violations of people.
Uh, that is.
Wasn't running.
As the chair, we are. Thank you. We are going to continue with our next member of the public, Mister Rick Gray.
Morning, Rick Ray. I am a Bonner County resident. This board and Clerk Rosedale have sworn by oath to protect the rights and guarantee to the people of Bonner County. A republican form of government. On January twenty-second.
Hold on, hold, hold up. Pardon me. Hold on. People. Look, people, we are here to do this meeting. Let's continue with public comment and actually would, for the, we're gonna. Look, people, we are here to do this meeting. Let's continue with public comment and actually would for the, we're gonna continue with public. Let's work to get through our public comment, the meeting as discussed. For the time people, Technology Department, can you give Mr. Gray his full three minutes? And we're gonna start over. Members of the public, please. Whether you agree or disagree, let's act civilly. To conduct the order of the county and the business. All right, I'm gonna give you your full three minutes. I apologize for the interruptions.
Thank you, Chairman.
Wait, hold, just give me one moment. Mr. Rose. I'm just gonna give you a warning right now. Your conduct repeatedly throughout the mill, we're just.
I'm not, he came to me, I'm talking to him, he's your agent. Don't warn me about when I'm talking to him.
Mister, Mister, whoa, Mister Rose, do not. Mister Rose.
No, no, you don't tell me what to do when your agent is challenging me.
Mister Rose, you, you have been warned. We are trying, I just watched. We're trying to let the people have their opportunity for public comment. Everybody in the room, let's get through this together. All right, technology, we've got our full three minutes. And I'm gonna sit back down and we're gonna let Mr. Grant. Let's try to keep our hands and feet to ourselves and let's listen to Mr. Grant. Mr. Grant.
Thank you, Chairman. This board and Clerk Rosedale have sworn by oath to protect the rights and guarantee to the people of Bonner County a republican form of government. On January twenty-second, I served this board and clerk with notice of maladministration in elections and unconstitutional form of government. The reason for that notice was to inform and educate my elected trustees. As to what the fundamental law has to say about how our elections are currently administered. To that end, I provided several fourth edition Black's Law. Definitions and maxims of law. Article one, section nineteen of the Idaho State Constitution is titled Right of Suffrage Guaranteed. It reads, no power, civil or military, shall at any time interfere. With or prevent the free and lawful exercise of the right of suffrage. In that notice, I asked, please show me in the evidence. She, excuse me, please show me the evidence that federal funds influencing state election policy makes county elections free. It's been fifteen days now and I have not received. A response from any of my trustees. That were noticed and as a result by tacit acquiescence, you have agreed that county elections are not free. With federal, when federal money shapes state election policy. The US government is not a party to the state constitution agreement that we have. With the one exception that the US Constitution is the supreme law of the land. And the definition for supreme law of the land in Black's Fourth Edition is due process by law. By the law of the land is most clearly intended, the general law. Which hears before condemns, which proceeds upon inquiry and renders judgment only after trial. The meaning is that every citizen shall hold his life, liberty, property. And immunities under the protection of the general rules which govern society. Everything which may pass under the form of an enactment. That's statutes, codes, you name it, is not the law of the land. Skip a little bit here. And Mulberry versus Madison, United States Supreme Court correctly confirmed unconstitutional legislation null and void, and that includes repugnant court decisions. Maximum of law states. An unconstitutional act is not a law. It confers no rights, imposes no duties, it affords no protection.
Your time has expired. Thank you for your comments. Our next public speaker will be Sherry DeVally.
Does this work? I'm so short. Sherry DeVally, for the record, I have a couple of topics I would like to address. Yes.
Thank you, please proceed.
Are only Bonner County residents allowed to speak?
No, but in our ordinance, it asks to say whether or not you're a Bonner County resident.
Well, I hadn't heard that. So anyway. Please give me my three minutes back.
Your time is ticking.
Oh, well, okay. So the first one I'd like to address is Mike Rosedale. I like to get on the record. Where I have credit card receipts, just like Ms. Lunsford.
Add your comments to the chair, please, ma'am.
Uh huh. I've got credit card bills that were not paid and they were overdue. And I'd like to know how that's going to affect the credit rating of the county. The next topic I would like to address is your new law that you'd like to put in place, call it ordinance, statute, grocery list, I don't care what you call it. If it's got the power of law behind it, it's a law. And I'd like to know how much. Time the people are going to have to weigh in on this because it is our right as we the people to weigh in on new laws. And if somebody was familiar with American government and civics, they would understand that. And not just. Go through as, you know, a sole authority in this county. As it is written up to be. I read your paper, it says that my representative is gonna be shut down, the people are gonna be shut down. And you are the sole authority to decide what is going to happen and what isn't. I'd like to have the people weigh in on this because we have a right, we have civil rights. And that's what I've got to say.
Thank you, Ms. DeVally. Our next public speaker is Mr. Dan Rose.
Not sure where the.
Would you like, I'll, I'll have this put into the record, Mr. Rose.
All of it, please, three pages. Dan Rose for the record, we have spoken time and again to the citizens' political free speech rights pursuant to Idaho Code. Idaho Constitution, Article One, Section Ten, instructing your representative. Idaho Code seventy-four two oh one. Public policy is public business. If you wish to change it, it is our business. And Bonner County ordinance for greater public participation. Further, B O C C Council has provided the B O C C. A twenty twenty-three legal trespassing opinion, which Chairman Omart apparently desires to manipulate overhaul and or disregard. I make comment to observations held by many of your constituents and elected peers. To the increasing negative rules, unlawfulness of the Board of County Commissioners, which. Includes subjective derogatory determination and nebulous definitions. Additional papers to shuffle for you. In New York Times Company versus Sullivan nineteen sixty-four, SCOTUS explained. That the vehement, caustic, and sometimes unpleasantly sharp personal attacks come with occupying government office. Public officials must have thick skin when encountering inevitable criticism. SCOTUS observed in Meyer versus Grant nineteen eighty-eight, the First Amendment's. Absolute unequivocal defense of core political speech is so axiomatic or self-evident. That government actors flagrant attempts to regulate that speech based on its content shocks the conscience. We've watched both. B O C C Chairman in the past year threaten constituents and peers or impute imaginary personal space threats. Both B O C C Chairman on a weekly basis have degraded and attempted to nullify the people's. Twenty twenty-two elected representation of District Two Commissioner Asia Williams. Commissioner. My request is that future agenda items. Be added to address your sworn oath. As the attached demonstrates in the packet. Today you violated US Code eighteen two forty-two. Deprivation of rights under the color of law. Number two, I'd ask that a future agenda item. Address. The chairman's decision to reinstitute Commissioner Williams District Two reports. Number three, to address the constituents' ability to comment on individual. Agenda items. Number four. To address the elimination of unlawful registration form to make public comment. You don't need to know what our subject matter is. Number five, correction to Pinocchio Omart's lie that the content of his sworn oath of office. To the B O C C is God, family, and country. Thank you.
Do you have more than one copy? Because I didn't catch all of what you were asking for. Thank you.
Our next member of the public who would like to speak is Ms. Susan Bowman. The next member of the public who would like to speak is Mr. Dan Welly. And just as a clarification, people. The, it's an online comment where you sign up online. This remained. As the way, you don't have to fill out the form to speak. Here. That's, that was also what was stated in the meeting, so communicate. Please proceed, Mr. Welly. Please proceed, Mr. Welly.
Firstly, I want to thank Commissioner Omart for the guidance in what manner of speech and how up. We are to direct our speech during the public comment period of the Board of Commissioners Business Meetings. And I'm gonna take this from one of his own. Sayings. But I'm gonna change it around just a little bit. To our side of the table. We, the public, have been told to direct our comments to the chair, which is exactly what I will do to the best of my ability. I will use the commissioner's own words. What the public has heard in the past year from these board meetings are lies being propagated by some commissioners. That are completely disrespectful to the members of the public. What the public won't tolerate is straight up lying with regard to actual events. Let me be clear, whether it is a lie of omission or commission. It is a lie as misrepresentation of the truth. Unequivocally, what we see week after week is a misrepresentation of the truth. Thank you for your time.
Would you state your name and if you're a resident of Bonner County, please, sir?
Daniel Welly. Yes, I am a resident of Bonner County.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next member of the public who would like to speak is Ms. Jennifer Kramer.
Jennifer Kramer, for the record, yes, I live in Bonner County. My comments are related to the rules from the city's standpoint that you are proposing to adopt. And I saw in the packet that your request to legal, but you did not include in the packet their response. You did state in your public. Conference, your press conference on the thirtieth, I think it was. That legal advised not to adopt those. And so I would like to understand. Why you are not following legal advice? I don't understand that. And if they've given you bad legal advice in the past, I guess that would be helpful to understand. Maybe that's the basis for it. Also, in, I think it was the January twenty-third meeting that you said that you won't control what we say, you're just trying to get. Control of how, how the meetings are running, which. I appreciate that you won't try to control how. However, the very first, if I can read this. The very first, or not the very first, but one of the items in those Sandpoint City Council. Rules is that. Not allowed is insulting, demeaning, intimidating, or offensive remarks. Or other communications. And so. To me, that's very subjective. What could insult one person might not insult somebody else. And, and so. If you proceed to adopt these, I think some specific definitions are required. And then I guess I don't know when you plan to. Publish the schedule of workshops. Will that be through special meetings so that we can participate? Because these, these rules that you are proposing are a definite affront to our freedom of speech.
Thank you, Mrs. Kramer. Our next speaker is Ms. Monica Gunter.
Monica Gunter, for the record, and yes, Bonner County resident, and I'd like to continue on with the District Two Commissioners Report. On February seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, at ten AM at the Blanchard Community. Blanchard Area Community Center Caucus Education with Senator Hart. Legislation Legislative District Two Chair Scott Hill and Commissioner Williams. Open to anyone in the community who wants to attend. We will be accepting donations at the community center to help keep our center open. March second, twenty twenty-four, presidential caucus. Look to your precinct committee man for your location in case it is not the same place that you vote. Spirit Valley will be the Blanchard Community Center. The doors open at eleven AM, you must check in, register to cast a vote. Voting is to begin at noon and closes at twelve thirty. This is a short window to vote. April twentieth, twenty twenty-four, Spirit Valley Town Hall at the Blanchard Community Center. From ten AM to two PM, instead of community influencer, we will host those running for the May primary. Thank you, Asia, for your reports.
Thank you, Ms. Gunter. Our next member is Mr. Dimitri Borisov.
Good morning, Commissioners. I see clarity from the chairman on proposed changes in ordinances, ordinance one two hundred. Mr. Chairman, could you please provide clear definitions for terms? Such as business of the county, disruptive behavior, derogatory comments, and other outline in the ordinance. As citizens of Bonner County, your employers, we would like to understand these terms better as you've indicated that you require rules for. Communications with you. Also, Mr. Chairman, considering your sworn oath to support and defend the Constitution of the United States. And the state of Idaho against all enemies, foreign and domestic, I'm compelled to ask. Why? Are you utilizing your political authority to arrest citizens of the United States and the residents of Bonner County? At what point did you choose to deviate from your oath to arrest citizens of the United States? Is it merely because you may not appreciate their opinions, a right protected by the first, by the Constitution and the First Amendment? Such actions are echoing the methods that are employed by the leaders of the Communist Party of the Soviet Union. Can you provide an explanation to these decisions that appear to conflict with the fundamental principles enshrined in our constitution and the democratic values? Thank you.
I will respond, I'm pulling up the revised code for. That and to begin with, it is my oath to the Constitution and the United States, which I will never take back. That allows me to say, the motto of the army, which is this will defend, and that includes Bonner County. Yep, so in Bonner County Revised Code, the business of the county. Is, it's defined. And it is. In chapter two. Found in regular meetings. And it says, the weekly meeting is designated for general external business of the board, including. But not limited to. Consideration of claims, consideration and approval of minute records, consideration and approval of proposed ordinances. Review of licensed applications, adoption of necessary resolutions, conduct public hearings. Conduct such other business as it may schedule, conduct such business as it may be required by Idaho Code. We have a written. Codified definition of what we're supposed to do, and that is what we are doing.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna chime in here since you used it as an opportunity. You failed to acknowledge that it says not limited to, which is very critical. Because what I'm working on, when I'm telling you Commissioner Chat, when Priest River Community Center says, Asia, can you make sure everybody knows what we're doing? Because we need to get services to Priest River, that is exactly the business of Bonner County. And the reason they're asking you to define it is there is a legal definition which has to do with that business which impacts the community. You have unilaterally decided that my commissioner report has nothing to do with Bonner County claiming that it's not business when it is only business. It is me telling people what we're doing, it is me answering questions to people and holding myself accountable as well as getting meaningful information out to people. That might have a same or similar concern, which is, if anything else, you can call it that ten percent other. But what you just read just told you that what I am doing on District Two Report is Bonner County business. And I will remind you that our room was very filled for Commissioner Chat to include even people that have been online saying they don't like Commissioner Chat. Yet they came to Commissioner Chat to be heard and we heard them respectfully because it's the business of Bonner County. So using that definition, will you say in real time that you will stop disregarding my ability? To put my report back on and allow me to put it back on so that we don't have to play the game of me stripping paper and handing it to people to read? Because it's gonna happen.
Mr. Williams, you are. The county is already subsidizing.
You just did it right now. You literally just did it right now.
Public speaker is Mr. Doug Patterson.
That question.
Our next public speaker is Mr. Doug Patterson. Our next public speaker is Mr. Doug Patterson.
Doug Patterson, for the record, yeah, I'm a county resident, been for a while. Um, during that time, I have been going to county commissioner meetings, the vast majority of them, for about fifteen years. Um, I'll make it fourteen. Um, and um. I'm talking here about your uh changes to the uh your commitment to give give order to your meeting by passing reg- uh resolution. Whatever you're gonna pass um and say that this has been discussed at least three times by past commissioners, and they've. Pretty much chosen not to do it um at the device of the council. Um, and but I would also say that um I have not seen a commissioner set. Of of sending commissioners that is that I view as less appropriate to make such rules. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Our next uh commenter, Amy Lunsford has spoken. Mr. Garrick.
Uh, George Garrett, for the record, I am a Bonner County resident. I'd like to propose two workshops to put a uh put on a future agenda as soon as possible. Each of these would give the board and members of the public an opportunity to help resolve deep divisions in the county. They are, again, this has come up before, the definition of business. For the purpose of business meetings and really the definition of community activism. They're related, so I'll discuss them together. There are dozens of hours of video available. Of Commissioner Chats and Town Halls chaired by Commissioner Williams. She's the only commissioner doing this kind of outreach. In viewing the videos, it's plainly obvious that there's no acrimony ever. And certainly no recesses or needs for citizen's arrest. It's plainly obvious obvious that she seeks and engages in respectful dialogue. And that she brings constituents' concerns back before the board as agendized items. It's perfectly obvious that she takes the time to explain her positions while. Varyously engaging with people so that any subsequent board vote that she takes is understood. Even when deliberation, which is also something that's controversial, isn't allowed at the business meeting. All of this somehow by some people. Gets twisted into something negative, worthless community activism. The ongoing diatribe that her behavior as an elected representative is worthless community activism can be summed up with one word. Ludicrous. The term was probably deliberately picked to evoke a particular politician and to become some type of slur. It looks to be part of an ongoing effort to sully Commissioner Williams' reputation. As far as the business meetings themselves go, conflict seems to continually arise when it comes to public comment, agendized items, and deliberation. All three clearly are part of the business meeting. Commissioner Williams comes to the business meetings with the expectation that other commissioners will do what she's already done. Listen to her constituents, address community concerns, and actually deliberate. The community comes to the business meetings with the expectation that their concerns will be agendized and that there will be deliberation. Based on the excellent comments of Commissioner Williams. Thank you, Commissioner Williams.
Our next public speaker will be Diane Madowski.
I was actually the first one to sign up.
Well. Oh, I you are. I apologize, Cheryl. You are. You are right. I am wrong.
Thank you, and the first shall be last. Okay, um, my name is Cheryl Messer. I am a resident of Bonner County. Um, the website for bonnercountyid.gov slash commissioners. States on that front page, the Bonner County Board of Commissioners. The purpose of this department, which I would say is the business of the county, because it's your purpose. Is to identify and clarify the needs of the people. And to ensure the county responds to those needs. The board executes all legislative power authorized. These powers include, but are not limited to, adopting and enacting the budget. Appropriation of expenditures and setting policy. Other powers include establishing fees and comprehensive use plans and conducting public hearings and meetings. Luke, on your website, lukeamit.com. You had put in running for this office, strong relationships make strong Bonner County. We are in this together. Freedom of speech, assembly, and religion are our right. We also have the right to disagree with one another. I would like to read a definition from the eighteen twenty-eight Noah Webster's Dictionary. Arbitrary or despotic exercise of power. The exercise of power over subjects and others with a rigor not authorized by law or justice. Or not requisite for the purposes of government. Hence, tyranny is often synonymous with cruelty and oppression. And that's what I've been feeling here. My remedy, this is also from Webster's Dictionary, eighteen twenty-eight dictionary, discussion. Means debate, disquisition, the agitation of a point or subject with a view to elicit truth. The treating of a subject by argument, to clear it of difficulties and separate truth from falsehood. Deliberation means the act of deliberating, the act of weighing and examining the reasons for and against. A choice or measure, consideration. Mutual dis- the second meaning is mutual discussion, not just one way, mutual discussion. And examination of the reasons for and against a measure as the deliberations of a legislative body or council. I would like you to do a workshop on free speech and where you're at, where with all this that is on your website. And yours individually, what you stand for. We want to get to the truth. What do you really stand for? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Miss Madowski. Excuse me, Miss Messer. Uh, Diane Madowski, you're you are next on our queue. Yeah, we've got, we have four left for the people that signed up. We can get through so that we don't have to make everybody sit so that they can listen. We can always start late. So people, I did say we have a scheduled eleven o'clock uh executive session. We have. Four more individuals who have signed up. Those are the people who are going to be allowed to speak today. And uh.
I actually have a comment on that. Or is there a third party that is costing the county an executive session? Is there? Because it doesn't, it's not clear. Do we have a third party that's participating, or is this county employee is participating?
Uh, we have county employees, which cost the taxpayer every time.
That's true, but I do not, I do not, I have not even made my comment yet. So if you bypass me. If you bypass me, fine, but I'm making my comment. It is not appropriate for you to disregard public comment when part of the reason this meeting went so long is you made a decision to do a civil arrest. And you're you're costing our county twice by way of civil liberties and rights. I and one of the things that has been brought up to members of this board is the the difficulty of saying that. The people that will always have to bear the consequence of what you're doing, especially when you take long breaks, is that the people on Zoom. Don't get to speak. We when we take breaks, they oftentimes don't actually get to come back, and that's not reasonable or appropriate. Bonner County people are paid by Bonner County. These people came to speak at this meeting, and it's their only opportunity. You have taken enough from this community today. I encourage you not to do the same of the people on Zoom.
I'm trying to let them speak, Ms. Williams. So and those the ones that are signed up. That are going to have that opportunity to speak in accordance with our rules. So, Miss Madowski, would you make your comments? Diane, are you there? You're gonna have to unmute yourself.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mister Chairman, Diane Mc- Madowski, I'm a Bonner County resident. Mister Chairman, I know you're not an attorney, nor do you play one on TV. But are you familiar with the Latin term vox populi? It means the voice of the people. Mister Commissioner, our voices matter, and they should matter to you. I don't know why certain members on this board are happy to shoot for a D minus. In my school days, a D minus would allow you to pass to the next grade and keep you from detention. I can't imagine any parent to boldly tell their child, just do the minimum every day at school. All you need is a D minus to pass. Why any member of this board would feel good about only doing the minimum when it comes to listening to the people they are supposedly. Representative, representing is beyond me. In regard to the edict that a person needs to fill out a form listing the subject of their comments before the meeting begins is ridiculous. The board is supposed to deliberate each issue. If a point is brought up before the deliberation that strikes a chord with a person in the audience. They should be able to comment so that the board members can take that comment into consideration when they deliberate. How can that happen if a person has to list the subject of the comment prior to the meeting? This minimum standards ideology is unacceptable and shameful. Please stop stifling the voice of the people with all these dictatorial rules. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Miss Madowski. Miss Johnna Plant.
Johnna Plant, Bonner County resident. Um, in the past year, I've watched the chair, Luca Mont, break every rule of the proposed ordinance. And when others have challenged him, questioned him, responded to him, or defended themselves against him. He has used his power to take recesses, stop public comments, and adjourn meetings. Many times he has done this as the chair, but actually as an individual, because these actions have not been a vote of the county commissioners. But has been at his discretion alone. Business meetings for the business of Bonner County are included, should be, have input from the taxpayers. So that elected officials can vote on the behalf of their constituents. This is a republic which should include the public participation in the meeting. I believe the First Amendment includes positive and negative statements, and I believe strongly. That when I have a public comment, it should be the three minutes to discuss and make comments that I feel. Are pertinent to the county, not what the chair thinks is pertinent to the county or deemed suitable or wants to hear. Your proposed rules are overreaching and tyrannical in nature, and I pose them completely. We all know perception is a thing of two different people can hear the same thing, but here actually two different things. For example, I can read a letter that did not sound threatening at all, but the chair can perceive it that someone's gonna come shoot things up. Or be aggressive at a meeting. When someone can be trespassed without making a single comment, sitting in their seat. And doing nothing wrong in a public place at a public meeting where there's gonna be public comment, it's a huge red flag for Bonner County. I believe Bonner County could be on the cusp of being sued for taking away the rights of the public to speak. In a public meeting when public comments are on the agenda. What I find frustrating is some of the county commissioners are not wanting to listen to the public. These proposed changes are in in the ordinance are completely out of line for the county and for the community. It will give the power to one individual, Luca Mont, that he can decide if I cough, it may be disruptive. If I comment, it may be insulting to him, or whether I just make a statement, he may consider it threatening. Or if I question, he may not consider it valid. This is not the way it should go. Please, I'd like to return to the three minutes of uninterrupted comment. And be able to comment on the business of con- of Bonner County, whatever I feel is worth saying. I'm against my elected officials quieting the public and our elected official, Asia Williams. It's it's been a constant battle since the new board has taken their seat. Um, I'm also fed up with the chair uh in his. Yes.
I don't think that's on our end, Johnna.
Okay, um, I I'm just, I feel like this is a dictatorship and not a republic.
Thank you for your comments, Miss Plant. Your time has expired. Our next public speaker will be Mr. Rick Kramer.
So I I would like to ask that instead of saying, oh, I saw it go to zero, that you allow people to finish their sentence, that is a better form of communicating.
The legal count.
You have done that for other people in the past. It's shows a little bit of respect to not just cut it off and have her.
Thank you for that comment. Our legal counsel that was provided, and actually, I will ask, we'll have this in executive. Will be whether or not we're gonna release that, because I will wait for the board. I chose not to, but the the guidance that was attached to the. The response, which is in your inbox, Commissioner Williams.
If you're suggesting you're talking during their public comment, we can get through all of them. So let's get through all, and then we can deliberate a different issue.
All right, and Mr. Rick Kramer.
Rick Kramer, for the record, I am a resident of Bonner County. I would like the uh Commissioners to please add an item to next week's agenda. To give an update on last week's IAC meeting, and especially how it relates to Bonner County.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer.
Is that all you you want?
Yes, that that's it.
And our last signed up public speaker for today is Mister Brandon Kramer.
Brandon Kramer, I'm a resident of Bonner County. A few items. As it relates to the starting of the clock and those of us who are on Zoom, we've already attested to being Bonner County residents or not, and already provided our full name. So the clock for us and for those who are in person should not start until those statements have completed. Secondly, the form online, uh, Commissioner O'Mont, and I wouldn't expect you to know this because you're not a technical wizard. Is a violation of antitrust laws, because it requires us to have a Google account to sign up. Not all members of the public have Google accounts for their own very personal reasons. Moreover, the information that you're asking to collect and the requirement of our email addresses in combination with our names and our place of of. Where we live, which is in Bonner County or not, is considered personally identifiable information. And the county has not made it clear what their privacy policy is, nor how that information is used. To us as we fill out that form, which is a requi- which is a legal requirement. As a result of both of these things, I would not, I would expect for you to have not run that by legal. And gotten their opinion, or you chose simply to ignore it. I would ask that you provide the legal opinions that were provided by the prosecutor as it relates to that form specifically. For those of us who sign up online via Zoom to provide public comment. The you can hold it up all you like. That doesn't that doesn't do me anything. You can email it to me. The la- the last thing to say, I want to say is you and I spoke yesterday, and I asked you specifically. A couple of weeks ago to put an item on the agenda for you to provide your definition of business, and you concluded our phone call yesterday. With telling me that I would find out what your definition of business is every time you vote on the agenda. And I think it's disingenuous, because you told me in writing that you would provide me what your definition is. You told me yesterday that you would do the same, and yet you fail and choose, you make a positive choice. To not come on the record and say what you believe the business of Bonner County to be. The ordinance is very, very open-ended to include all things that would affect Bonner County and all things brought forth on the agenda. By those who are privileged to do so. So I'm going to ask again, and I'm going to make it a little more fair this time. I'm gonna ask that all three Commissioners. Come forward with what their personal definitions are for the business of Bonner County. That way we can hash through whatever uh the disagreements there may be, and the public can have a clear understanding. Of where each of you stand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer. Just in case anybody wants to know, I'm now looking on my phone for the drive to see. If there was anybody else who signed up before we go upstairs.
So I'm gonna ask, if you noticed today, it was required that you sign up before nine AM, but that form was not out here uh at nine AM. And I also don't believe that the people receive notification of where to find what you were requesting. Since there are so many people in the audience, and there are three million people online. Yeah, I believe it is the right of the people to be heard at this meeting, because you didn't even follow the requirement to allow these people to sign up before nine AM. So.
It is eleven twelve, and we are going into recess to go upstairs. I will check that at that time. So that we can then proceed into exec- so that we can then proceed into executive session. I have exhausted the list, and if there are people online, we can do so.
Um, wait, pause before you leave because once you break the Zoom link, those people don't come back. And that's what will happen.
Uh, tech, can you leave this Zoom link?
I'm telling you because it happened, this, it happened to Commissioner Chat. It doesn't transfer to upstairs.
There is no Zoom link for upstairs. So, thank you.
Which is my point. So how do those three people get to speak if you leave?